Do we have power? Yes, we do. We're ready. Good evening. Thank you all for coming. All right. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cable Vision Channel 118, and Verizon Fios Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. The meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Waddell?
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that the act or recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn.
Here.
Ms. Francisco.
Here.
Ms. Jodri.
Here.
Ms. Mazone.
Here.
Mr. Slade.
Here.
Mr. Solakowski.
Here.
Mr. Van Catan.
Here.
And Ms. Dantuno.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Code of Ethics, please.
The Board member will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to add the addendum, please? Ms. Mazone, motion.
Francisco will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunn is absent, so we'll start with Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Jiridano.
Yes.
Ms. Jodri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Catan.
Yes.
Okay, the addendum has been added to certificated personnel. Number 21, as well as an addition of long-term substitute line, item B, to resolution number five.
Thank you. Approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please? Ms. Mazone, motion.
Van Catan will second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Mr. Jiridano.
Yes.
Ms. Jodri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolution one for approval of minutes passes.
I'd like to invite our student rep up.
Hello, everyone. It's great to be here again. To start off, our fall sports teams concluded with many teams making deep runs in their state tournaments, and of course, for the first time in school history, our girls volleyball team became state champs. Our marching nights brought home a national title, completing an outstanding competition season. Coming up this Thursday and Friday is our Fall Comedy. I already bought my tickets, and rumor is, you should too. I hope to see everyone there. For our seniors, it's almost December and college is coming upon us. Guidance hosts the Instant Decision Day on December 10th and 17th. Schools like Montclair, NJIT, Stockton, and many more will be there. The energy within our student body is like no other, with Dumpling Day by Chinese Honor Society being a great success. The Old Bridge High School community once again stepped up and created baskets for over 50 families in need for Thanksgiving. Coming up this week, tomorrow, we have the Harvest of Care by Community Care. SantaCon this Friday kicking off our peer programs Toys for Tots campaign, and Student Senate is hosting a gingerbread building contest in the near future. We will find out even more tomorrow with our first Knights Roundtable meeting. Thanksgiving is next week and winter break not far behind. It is wild to realize how fast this year has gone, and we still have so much more in store. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I have a motion for recognition?
Slade, a move.
Jiridano, a second.
We have Slade and Jiridano.
Move the Board to approve the retirement of the following staff member with deep appreciation for their years of dedicated service to the district. Robin Gomeski, right, Gomeski? Old Bridge High School Cosmetology, 25 years of service. Congratulations, Robin, and good luck on your retirement.
I remember her when she was a student of ours, which was many, many years ago, and then she became a school teacher. We're very proud of her. Thank you.
Can we invite Mr. Domeno up to do the sports recognition?
Mr. Domeno, you have the plaques?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, good evening. I'd like to start out by congratulating all sports teams, athletes, families on an incredible season. Being able to successfully balance athletics and academics takes hard work, organization, and dedication. All of these attributes will assist our student athletes in their future endeavors, and I am incredibly proud to watch our athletes grow and develop while being part of our teams. Tonight, I'd like to introduce and celebrate three athletic programs for winning their division, conference, sectional championship, and/or state championship. First up, we have our Girls Varsity Soccer Team. Here to accept the award is Coach Hopping and the Girls Soccer Team. Congratulations on winning the Red Division Championship and the first time, for the first time in school history, winning the GMC Conference Championship. Congratulations to Coach Hopping as well for being named Coach of the Year in the GMC Conference. Next, we have our Varsity Field Hockey Team. Here to accept the award is Coach Fuentes and the Varsity Team. Congratulations on winning the Red Division Championship for the first time in school history, and Coach Fuentes, Coach of the Year for the GMC Conference. And finally, we have our Girls Varsity Volleyball Team. Here to accept the award is Coach Hotman and the Varsity Volleyball Team. Congratulations on winning the Red Division Championship, Conference Championship, Group Four State Sectional Championship, and for the first time in school history, overall Group Four State Championship.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to all of our high school sports teams. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Jiridano.
Yes.
Ms. Jodri.
Yes.
Ms. Mazone.
Yes.
Mr. Slade.
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski.
Yes.
Mr. Van Catan.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn is absent. Ms. Francisco.
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno.
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for recognition passes. Congratulations to all our athletic teams.
So I'm going to give the students a chance to clear out. At this point, I'd like to invite Dr. Bregan to do his last superintendent report as part of the Old Bridge Team.
Thank you, Ms. Dantuno. Not a lot to report, but I think what you saw tonight just kind of exemplifies what you'll find in the Old Bridge Township Public Schools, that not only do we focus on the academics, but we focus on all the other things that go along with, you know, educating our students and our community. And the sports teams, I was fortunate to see almost all of those teams play at one point during the season. And the thing that excites someone in a leadership position is not necessarily the wins or losses, although we all love that, right, is the way those young ladies played together and the sportsmanship that they demonstrated throughout the season. That's something as a former coach and a player that you're always proud of, and our kids have always made us proud of that. So, kind of leads me into this is, as Ms. Dantuno said, my last meeting, although I've only been here a short period of time. I'm extremely grateful for all the opportunities I had. I'm grateful for this Board of Education for trusting me with this position as the interim superintendent, kind of keep the ship moving forward without sinking while they were finding their permanent solution. It's been a great experience for me, working with all of you. I say that with someone that has some experience working with school board members. I applaud your commitment to doing what you believe is best for our kids. It's evident. It's evident, and even though sometimes the board thinks you all don't always agree on different things, I found you to disagree in a very effective manner. So you should be proud of that, and I mean that sincerely, having some experience with other boards, that I didn't always see that in. As far as our staff and our community, too, our schools are second to none. This is something that all of you should be very proud of. Even though I was a leader of this district only for a short period of time, we have great administrators, you have great staff members, you have great teachers, and it's not just the ones that you see represented or the people that we highlight when you visit the classrooms, when you go down to the bus stops and you see all the work that goes behind the scenes to maintain the buildings, the coaching, and all the other stuff that it takes to run a district. This is something that all of you should be very proud of, and you have a great system here. So, I will do all I can in my remaining days to help transition Dr. Sasso, who I know will do a fine job as all the time that he's spent in this community, and he's already hit the ground running. And I look forward to transitioning, and I've been approved to be his mentor in an official capacity, so I look forward to that as well. I've rambled long enough, but just wanted to make sure I said those words, and thank you, and best of luck.
Thank you very much. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Special committee reports?
Yes, okay. So, on November eleventh, we had our Finance Long Range Strategic Planning Meeting. We identified possible solutions to the district's financial challenges, considering the Pretzamgen presentation outlining over three hundred million dollars in future required capital expenditures. The board and community also expressed their priorities and non-negotiables. We all went around, we had a few minutes to basically discuss and have our opinions heard, and gathering this information was a necessary step before being able to develop and present potential solutions to our financial situation. And our next meeting in executive session as a board is on November twenty-fourth. We're going to go over the results and discuss other matters that will not be brought publicly yet, but that is our next meeting, and we're right on top of handling the budget and the financial challenges we're in. Thank you.
We had a special services meeting on October thirtieth. We discussed so many things. I'm going to read you a little bit from the agenda that we had. We had Dr. Darty, Aden Alfie, and Dr. Tuwee presented on a lot of different topics. We talked about, we had an ESY overview, we talked about unified clubs and intramurals, we discussed staffing, an additional BCBA to our program, Wilson reading update, we had an Acadians overview, we talked about new facilities and classrooms, and Dr. Tuwee discussed that the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year planning is already underway. We talked about professional development and the first Family Academy Night that's going to be on Communication Beyond the Classroom, Communication Beyond the Classroom. And then we talked about some highlighted upcoming dates and important events. Inclusive School Week, December fifth to ninth. The SEPTA meetings for this school year are going to be November twentieth, January fifteenth, March nineteenth, and May fourteenth. The CPAG meetings will be December tenth, February eleventh, and April fifteenth. Special Services meetings will be December second, January twenty-second, March third, April twenty-third, and June ninth. And strategic planning meetings will be November eleventh, December eleventh, January eighth, February fifth, March fifth, April ninth, May seventh, and June eleventh.
The Student Life Committee meeting met last Tuesday, and we discussed with the athletics, what the long-range goal and plans for the athletics fields and things are, what upcoming maintenance is going to be needed, and some of the Title IX issues going on with the softball field. With the other parts of the committee, we discussed trying to get more involved with the town for things like their cultural fair that they had this past week. Would like to see kind of more partnership with our student clubs and things like that. So that was at the Student Life Committee. Any other committee meeting? All right. We'll open the mic up for the hearing of the residents on any agenda item only. Seeing none, we'll close the mic, thank you. We have nothing on policy tonight, so for curriculum, can I have a motion for item one through three?
Jodri, move it.
Mazone, second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through three for curriculum professional endow and passes.
Thank you. Finance, can I have a motion for one through thirteen, please?
Francisco will move.
Jodri will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through thirteen passes.
Can I have a motion for Athletics, item one and two, please?
Venkatesan will move. Giordano, second.
I got Venkatesan and then Giordano.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for Athletics passes.
Thank you. Can I have Non-Certificated Personnel Office, can I have a motion for one and two, please?
Giordano, a motion?
Yep. Venkatesan will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two for Non-Certificated Personnel Office passes.
Can I have a motion for item one under Non-Certificated Personnel?
Francisco will move.
Giordano, second.
Any discussion? I've had the privilege of working with Jayden a little bit at Memorial. He's a great kid and is definitely on top of things, so wish him the best of luck in his next branch of his career. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dunne is absent, so Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for Non-Certificated Personnel Operational passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for Non-Certificated Personnel Other, items one through seven, please?
Mazone, a motion?
Giordano, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Fran, uh, Ms. Dantuno, excuse me.
Yes.
Resolutions one through seven for Non-Certificated Personnel Other passes.
Can I have a motion for items one through twenty-one with adding the part B of five for certificated personnel?
As well as a number twenty-one via the addendum.
Yeah, one through twenty-one.
Mazone, motion?
Mazone, motion?
Giordano, second.
Giordano, second.
Any discussion?
Yes, congratulations to Dr. Sasso and Dr. Bragan once again for their service to the town and continued service to Old Bridge and beyond. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through twenty-one as added via the addendum, or is pass?
I would like to congratulate Ms. Spazio and Mr. Oliveri. Thank you for taking over as we steal Dr. Sasso from you. We know the high school's in great hands, so thank you again. Can we bother you for a picture? We've got to make it official if, you know, come on up for a picture. It's not official until it's in a picture.
Just want to mention something. Thanks, Dr. Sasso. I know this was not so easy for us, right? Because as board members, we've been always having this question, how are we going to transition? And are we going to do better and better every other day, right? So thanks to Dr. Sasso. He came up with a proposal that he shared very descriptively, elaborately, of how we think this should operate, and how we picked and chose, you know, as an interim principles of existing vice principles, et cetera, and a roadmap and a plan to get there. So really appreciated, you know, the descriptive way of approaching it, where a little bit more data-driven way, and some savings out of it, and et cetera. So, want to thank Dr. Sasso. He does not just pick it up out of air, but there is a plan behind, thank you.
All right, Non-Certificated Personnel Transportation, item one through three, can I have a motion, please?
Francisco will move.
Mazone will second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three for Non-Certificated Personnel Transportation passes.
Thank you. Transportation, can I have a motion for items one through four, please?
Mazone, a motion?
Francisco will second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four for Transportation passes.
Thank you. Supplies, Equipment, and Services, can I have a motion through items one through six, please?
Jodri, a move.
Giordano, second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
Number one, Dr. Tuwee, can you just clarify what exactly we use this high-focus center for?
Psychiatric clearances of students in danger of themselves or others.
Got it. Thank you.
I didn't hear that.
Oh. We, sometimes we have to send students out if they're identified as a danger to themselves or others. There's a process to that, and part of that process is an outside clearance. We use Doctor Swami as one of our options. This would just be a second option as opposed to having to send a student to a hospital setting.
Yes, I did. Is that a fee for, per child, I imagine, right? Is that?
Per evaluation.
Yeah, exactly. Okay. And then, my other question was for number four, when it, you know, in regards to the pedestrian bridge repairs. So I know, you know, it says here that we have denied the bids. So I was curious, because it says that it is, that they substantially exceed the cost estimates of the work. So I was just curious what the cost estimate is. What are we looking for?
Sure. So, the original cost estimate provided by Takarski and Millman, all-inclusive of the project, was somewhere in the range of just over two hundred thousand dollars. We don't want to, I don't want to necessarily give the specific number, because sometimes that's against, given the vendor, they ask for that, and we... But when it did come in, the bid provided by Capella Construction was reviewed by legal counsel to make sure it was responsive and responsible. They did not have a DPMC qualification to do the steelwork, and they did not submit a subcontractor to do the steelwork either. As a result, their bid was rejected. And then, the Industrial Services Enterprises, that bid was way over the proposal, or at least the estimate that we had from our architect. So we did reject all bids. Once we had this rejection now, we worked with Takarski and Millman to put it out essentially exactly how it was. When you go through a bid process like that, and if there's no bids that come in the second time around, or there can't be, an award can't be made, you can then negotiate with a potential contractor. But you have to have, without changing any specifications, two unsuccessful bid attempts. So, this rejection does allow us to put it back out on the street for bid, and that's what we'll be doing, you know, tomorrow.
What does that timeline look like for a second bid process?
It has, it's required to be out at least for ten days. So typically, you know, being that we're not going to necessarily change anything, it should probably, we're going to try and keep it as minimal as possible. But there's some potential dates, you can't do, you can't open bids on Mondays, you can't do it after a holiday. So we just have to kind of check the calendar, and then align it up as best as possible with our next potential board meeting, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dun is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri? Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through six for Supplies, Equipment, and Services Carries?
Ms. miscellaneous, items one through four, can I have a motion, please?
Jodri, a move.
Francisco will second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
We are going to make an administrative correction on this in regards to the attendance at the committee meetings on ten sixteen twenty-five for Food and Operations. We did miss Sal Giordano being in attendance, so we'll add Sal to the ten sixteen Food and Operations meeting.
So maybe someone can remember my life better than myself. So I was there for one of the ten nines, but I'm not listed for the second one, but I don't remember, because there were so many meetings. But it's the same day. Anybody remember? I can't remember.
Ten, no.
We can definitely look into this later, but just wanted, I noticed that I wasn't there, so.
Yeah, you were there. All right, we'll administratively correct and add Elena Francisco for ten nine. Because that was the evening meeting, six o'clock to nine. One, two, three, four. Rich Dunn was conflicted. Five, six, seven. Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent, Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazone?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolutions one through four for miscellaneous as administratively corrected, passes.
Thank you. Board, Secretary in Board Business, can I, motion for item one?
Venkatesan will move.
Mazone will second.
Any discussion?
I would, I would like to congratulate Jen and Margie on your reelection, and congratulate Brooke on your, what do we call it? Not reelection, you're winning. Well, whatever. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you.
On your election, we'll congratulate that. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Did they, they officially, didn't they make it official? Today, right?
No, we have to, we have to vote on it.
Is it Monday? All right, tomorrow, tomorrow. So it's official as of tomorrow. Awesome. Any other discussion?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Yes, so I'd like to congratulate Ms. Dantuno, Ms. Richard Patterson, Ms. Jodri for winning these elections, these three seats. Congratulations to the OBEA for getting rid of me this time. I enjoyed my two terms on the board, and as was brought on before, the board... the boards have gone better. I've enjoyed my time, and I feel like I've offered myself to help as many people as I can. And I was very disappointed on the results of how it happened, but then, looking back on it, I kind of went my own way on a lot of things. I stood independent as long as I could, and unfortunately, a lot of people are going to vote for whoever a group or people tell them to vote for. So I kind of realized that going in, and now I'm more content and accepting of what happened. And we'll see what goes on going forward. I didn't spend too much on my first two campaigns. The third one, I spent a lot more. I was in a newspaper twice in a row, two months in a row, full page, and I got zero new emails. So that kind of told me that, you know, people are going to, people are going to vote the way people endorse them, which I didn't get any major endorsements, but that's just how the system works. And going forward, the money's not a problem, my money to spend on these campaigns, but I don't know if I want to compete with, you know, some of those groups. I'd rather use that money towards building a new classroom, like SEPTA's been doing. So we'll see what happens. My retirement odds have gone way up, if anyone's betting on that. And, oh, back to advertising. Yeah, like I said, I don't, I don't know if it's going to be worth it to do it again, but we'll see. I did enjoy it, and I'd like to thank the board members, everyone that I've been able to work with. I'll give a list of everyone I've been with at the December meeting, but that's it. Thank you, and congratulations. Good luck.
Thank you, Sal. Any other discussion?
Yeah, just want to congratulate, you know, Jen, Brooke, and Margie. Looking forward to working with all of you, at least for my next two-year term. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Venkatesan?
Yes.
Mr. Dunne is absent. Ms. Francisco?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Ms. Jodri?
Yes.
Ms. Mazzon?
Yes.
Mr. Slade?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
And Ms. Dantuno?
Yes.
Resolution one for board secretary and board business passes.
Thank you. At this point, I'll open up the mic for the hearing of the residents on any school district item. Are you going?
Oh, I have a minder.
Hi, my name is Brooke Richards Patterson. Thank you for the congratulations, especially Christina. Whatever, back. Thank you. I'm looking forward to all those for the next couple of years. I just wanted to mention, I don't, the meeting the last time was like such a flash. I don't know if anybody acknowledged the marching band, that they're national champions? Did we get to say that? Okay. It was a flash. So I just, while we're celebrating today, I thought, I just wanted to give them a shout out, too, because they're at 93.8 on their score, and I thought that was pretty awesome and worth the mention. I want to also congratulate Margie and Jen. I look forward to working together. I do want to touch on Sal's comments, because I did, I was going to bring them up anyway, and thank you for your, your time here. I can say I appreciate that. You always answered every single email. Even if I said I disagree with your budgeting decisions, you still answered, and you're always polite. So I appreciate that. I admire that you're so young and that you went for it. And I personally disagree that people went by endorsements. I think people went by values. And I think that it speaks a lot, that there's three very different people coming into it, and I look forward to that. I think it's going to all come together nicely, so that we can kind of see where different people stand in our community. So I look forward to that. And I want to also tell Dr. Bragan, we're going to miss you, and I'm so glad that you're going to mentor Dr. Sasso. I don't, and I, not that I think that Dr. Sasso isn't fully capable, it's just, you know, this is new. It's new. So, so it's great to have a nice team like that. I made you some brownies as a thank you. I think that you are so attentive. I enjoyed meeting with you. I know, what I noticed was, the couple times we did speak was, if I say something, you repeat it back to me to make sure you understand it correctly. Then you put it in your notes, and you take care of it. That went from family academy nights, that went to that funding email, went out in a day, and, and the newsletter. I hope Dr. Sasso keeps that newsletter, because that's went out twice. And I just mentioned it, because I want Board of Ed things to be put out there to the whole community. So I just wanted to say thanks. I wanted to thank Dr. Sasso for calling me the day after elections, too. That was really personal and really cool. So that was it. Best wishes to everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're going to close the mic? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. I guess I have to fill this out. I'm new here. I'm not a resident, but I am, and if I'm out of order, let me know. My name is Reverend Donna Stewart. I am the president of the Perth Amboy area branch of the NAACP, which covers Perth Amboy, Woodbridge, Saraville, South Amboy, Old Bridge, and Carteret. And one of the reasons I'm here is, first of all, to introduce myself to the Board of Ed. One of the things that we do is we go to Board of Education meetings and council meetings to introduce ourselves, to build a relationship and rapport, to make sure that all people are treated equally and fairly. So I'm here, this is my second meeting, and again, I don't know your protocols. I'm from Perth Amboy. We have a different system. So I'm here to learn, get to know you all, to build a relationship and rapport, but also to let people know that that's what we're here for, to make sure that all people are treated equally. Students, staff, you know, what have you. So I'm here and available, and I hope to see you each and every month for your meetings and to learn more about you individually, and what you're, you know, you're doing, and how you're doing things, so that we can hopefully work together and build community, because it's very important in these days and times to do that. So again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm not a resident. Like I said, our town is different. You don't have to be a resident to speak, but I wanted to let you know that I do represent this area, and you'll be seeing more of me in the very, in the future. Thank you so much.
Yeah, just sign your name and look. Thank you, and welcome to Old Bridge. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, then we're going to close the hearing of the residents. Does any of the board members have any old business?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Who wants to go first? Yeah, old business. I'm just curious to see how far we got with the installation of the video camera in the conference room, so we can actually videotape all the committee meetings and the public building. This way we can be a little more transparent.
So we do, we do have two proposals with a full setup. I actually called Dr. Sasso today about them. We just want to review, you know, some of the makeup in that room. We're trying to clean that room up a little bit. So I want to just, you know, as the new sheriff in town in a couple, I want to make sure that the application we put in meets his vision as well for that. So we have two proposals. I'll be going over them with Dr. Sasso. And once, you know, we choose the option, we'll move forward with the installation. So it's really on the cusp, but I just want to run it by the new boss.
Thank you.
Elena, can we get new chairs that aren't fabric? Just saying.
I like those chairs.
Just saying. They're very comfy, but. Okay. Okay, so yeah, I just have a few things, kind of a mix of old and new business. So I just wanted to say, what an honor it was to go to the Salk Veterans Day Assembly last week. So I wanted to thank Mrs. Lavoti and all of the other staff members who had a part in that event. You can tell just how much she loves it, how passionate she is about it. And she even cooked for everybody. So I was eating pulled pork at 10:00 AM, which I don't normally do, but it was delicious. I'm just really glad that our students at Salk really get a chance to take a moment to truly reflect and think about, you know, all that our veterans have given for us and our freedoms. So I just wanted to say thank you for, for that invitation and being able to be there. I would like to say that SEPTA is having their next meeting this Thursday, so in the next two days. On November 20th, it's going to be at 6:30 in the high school learning lab. And they call it their thankful meeting. It's, I went last year. It was a really nice gathering of people. So we really hope that you can make it. If you are going to go, please RSVP, because the OBEA is going to be providing food, and it'd be helpful if they have a head count. Dr. Sasso is going to discuss ways to strengthen relationships among our students, staff, families, community. So it's going to be really great to hear from him. And we are also going to have the opportunity to tour the new life skills classrooms at the high school. So I really hope you can make it. I know they've got quite a few people coming out, so the more the merrier. They are also selling ornaments. Not really meant to be a fundraiser, per se, but more of just kind of bringing people together. They are calling it their team together initiative. So if you have questions about it, or you want to see what they are, go on their website or on their Facebook page. And it's this really nice ornament that they're hoping that we can all, you know, take part in, send to others in the district. They're even willing to deliver them for you if it's within the district. And if you want to purchase some, they're only $2 each to give to other community members in towns. It's, it's just meant to, you know, unify all of us at the, you know, kind of a fresh start with Dr. Sasso, and also through the holiday season. So if you can do that and support, that would be great. I would also like to congratulate Jen and Margie on their reelection, and Brooke on your election. I look forward to the next year and working with, with all the board members. Okay, let's see, where am I? I would like to say good luck to Mrs. Fazio and Mr. Oliveri on your new endeavor. Very exciting, and congratulations. I would like to thank Dr. Bragan for all that he has done in the short time that he has been here. He entered a really difficult situation, being an interim. It's not an easy spot. And he did it with grace, and with class, and with passion, with all of his knowledge and expertise and experiences. So I really genuinely just want to say thank you for everything that you've done in the short time you've been here. And lastly, I would like to welcome Dr. Sasso. I can't believe that we're turning a page here, and next meeting you will be up here. And I am really excited. I'm really excited for all of your visions and your passion to serve this great community and school district. So, okay, I'm done. Thanks.
I have a few things. One, I would like to congratulate the Old Bridge High School varsity football team. They had such an amazing season this year. They really, they played their hearts out. The last game, they didn't end the way they wanted to, but they really did. They did, they had an amazing season. So I want to congratulate the football team. The marching band had a phenomenal season. So congratulations to the marching band also. I want to say thank you to the OBEA for sponsoring Farm Day at the preschool. It was actually a really, really cute day for the kids. There was some chickens that I've actually never seen before, and they had pigs and goats, and it was really, really cute. So thank you to the OBEA for that. Dr. Bragan, thank you for your service, even though it was short. I thought, I think you brought a lot to this district, a lot of knowledge, a lot of just bringing togetherness to this, to this district. So thank you. Dr. Sasso, welcome, as always. My mom said, congratulations. But I know you're going to do great, so congratulations. Congratulations to Mr. Oliveri, Ms. Sasso, Mrs. Sasso, I mean, Mrs. Fazio. Sorry. Did not mean to mix that up. Mrs. Fazio, I actually told Dr. Sasso that you literally scare the heck out of me. So I will probably try to stay away from the high school as much as I can, but I think you're going to do a fantastic job, and congratulations. Wait, what else do I have to say? God, I can keep going. There was something else. Oh, can we, really quick, I'm sorry, I overlooked this while we were voting. If we can go back really quick to, hold on. Okay, under curriculum and professional development, number two, move the board to approve the revised second's area field trip destination. I would like to change my vote to a no on that, if we could. Is it too late? Okay.
Yes, you can do it.
Okay, let me just, curriculum and professional.
Curriculum and professional, number two. It was in the beginning.
Okay, the revised field trip. Okay. So we will change on curriculum professional development, resolution number two to a no. For Mazzon, yes on all others?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, resolution two still does pass, but will be noted for the record to change your vote to no.
Sal, I do want to say thank you for your service on the board. I do think you have a mind of your own in the, in the best way possible. You have a mind of your own, and I, I think you did great things on the board. So thank you for your years of service here. And Mrs. Fazio, I didn't mean that in a bad, in a bad way. You just remind me of my mom. And it's just, it's just like Mrs. Fiori. Mrs. Fiori used to scare me, too, but she's like, she's, she was great. I actually wanted her to say. So, but congratulations. All right, I'm done now.
Anyone else have any?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead. Please rescue Christina.
Yeah. I would just like to reiterate our congratulations to the girls soccer team, the field hockey team, and the girls volleyball team. We're really proud of you. Congratulations to Mrs. Fazio and Mr. Oliveri. Congratulations, Dr. Sasso. Thank you so much, Dr. Bragan. You've really made a difference in the time that you, in the short time that you've been here. Let's see, National Dumpling Day, the Chinese Honor Society was absolutely delicious. So I'm glad that I got to go to that. Of course, the Veterans Day event at Salk was just absolutely beautiful. Ms. Lavoti did a great job on that. And I'm not sure if I congratulated Lily on her NJPTA Student Champion Award, but congratulations Lily Dantuno. And I think that's it.
All right. I'll add a few things here. Again, thanks to all the students who took part in all the various sports teams. And importantly, I think, to the parents who supported them. I'm sure how painful it could be to pick them up and drop and travel. It's not so easy. So thanks and congratulations to the parents. And of course, our staff, you know, the coaches and the supporting staff. I think there's a lot going in, right, to enable these students, both academically and, you know, in the field of sports. So congratulations to everyone, and, you know, thanks for all the supporting folks. And again, congratulations to Mrs. Sally and James, you know, looking forward to see, you know, you grow and grow the kids in this district as well. And there was one more thing I want to mention. A few parents had reached out to me in the last, you know, few weeks with some of their concerns, and I told them, follow the chain of command. And of course, you know, they reached out to follow the chain of command. And, you know, Dr. Sasso, thanks. Early on, I know you're not still on the table yet, but thanks for your support. And, you know, the parents came back to me saying, you know, we had a very good fruitful resolution, and the students are happy as well. So again, you know, it's good that, you know, we're getting into a rhythm and a flow. Thank you very much. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
As was mentioned earlier, make sure you see rumors. It's Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM. These kids are like Broadway, so be sure to support them. Thank you, Ms. Mazzon, for your kind words. And I, like, you, you get to change your vote, and nothing happens. When I try to vote and change it, substitutes get threatened to get pulled. So just, I'm just, so, but thank you very much for your kind words, you, Ms. Richards Patterson. So thank you for your kind words. Thank you. Have a nice day. We'll, we'll talk more in December.
Sorry, one last thing. I forgot. I want to thank, you know, Jay, because I saw the news on you helped from the OBEF perspective to support clean some of the areas. I think you were part of it. So, yeah, exactly. So thanks for that service. And next time, you know, please let us know, you know, who is available. We're happy to, you know, give more hands. Thank you. Yeah.
All right, now, come up with an original thought of the thank yous and the congratulations. Not going to follow that act. Thanks, Dr. Bragan. I know I tried to congratulate you, I think last month, and they cut me short, but it was great working with you. I feel like I gained a new friend, as well as, you know, gaining some good insight from your experience. So thanks again. Congratulations to the dream team in the corner, Dr. Sasso, and Mrs. Sasso, should I call it? Ms. Fazio, Mr. Oliveri. I know, no, I don't. And then congratulations to all the winning teams. It's nice, again, I've mentioned this in the past, the podium is a great place to bring good thoughts. And when we see congratulations and highlights and all the good stuff, you know, I'm a big advocate for that podium to just promote that. So tonight was a great meeting. I look forward to a lot more meetings like that. And congratulations to the board elects. Sal, I don't know what you said before, but good job for the last six years, but thanks for your insight, man. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to congratulate everybody on their appointments this year, the candidates that ran for Board of Education on their appointments. And Sal, thank you for your service for the last six years on the board. You did a good job. You educated me a little bit. Thank you.
Sal, I'm going to wait to thank you till next meeting, because you still have one more month of hanging out with us. You're stuck. I would like to thank the Chinese Honor Society for their dumplings. They did a great job. The kids. The kids had it all set up and did a fantastic job. And they were also at the Township Cultural Arts Fair. They had a table and they were teaching the kids the, I'm going to get it wrong, I'm going to get in trouble when I get home. I was going to say the fan twirling, but it's not. All right, I'm not going to try. I'm not going to go there. Salk, you know, thank you for inviting us to the, the Veterans Day thing. I got a half hour in before I had to go to work, but it was great to see, you know, the band and the choir work together. It was great to see the veterans there. Thank you guys for showing up and thank you for your service. Dr. Bragan, thank you for everything. You came in knowing you had, you know, a short time, at least a short time with us and wanted to make a difference in that time period and, you know, you were the right fit to keep the ball, not only the ball going, but, you know, increase momentum and make change. So thank you for that. Mrs. Fazio, Mr. Oliveri, congratulations. Mrs. Fazio, you're not allowed to go far because Lily says you have to hand her her diploma next year. So they're not scared, they're awesome people, I promise. But I also want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. You know, I'm thankful for this town and the community and yes, we are thankful for you, Christina. Thank you very much. But, you know, listen, no matter what part of town you're in, you know, we're big, but we've got that small town feel and, you know, that is heard and seen from our sports to our arts, things like that. So thank you, I'm thankful for Old Bridge. The one thing I meant to say before Thanksgiving and didn't, I did say something to Dr. Bragan when we were doing the sports about our marching night. So I don't know if their season's over, like if they're not, but we definitely want to get them up here and congratulate them because they've done December. So like, their season has been phenomenal, you know. Definitely our athle, excuse me, our athletics have won, but, you know, our marching nights and color guard and all that have had, you know, first place after first place, you know, win after win. So they're another one that definitely need to be congratulated, so. On that note, I think we can just say happy Thanksgiving to everyone and a motion to adjourn without executive session.
Mazone, motion?
Giordano, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, go have a good Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you all.
Just to update you on that one.